And Mr. Martucci.
Yep.
All are here.
I don't think we received any correspondence over the past week, but do we have any delegate, and I don't think we have any delegates and visitors.
No delegates and visitors.
But do we have any public comment? No public comment. Do we have an approval of the minutes for December 18th? Motion by Mr. Vecchia, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Perrin, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? The ayes have it. Motion to approve the minutes of January 2nd.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Martucci, second by Mr. Vecchia. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
Do we have any abstentions on the first?
Yes.
Yes.
There are three abstentions for the minutes of December 18th meeting.
And those are, Mr. Martucci, Mr. Fabiano, and Ms. Pat. And abstentions for January 2nd?
No, no abstentions.
No abstentions.
Did they have a sound out?
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the warrants and payroll warrants and budget transfers. Anything to explain there, do we have a motion to approve those?
So reading warrant number?
Yeah.
The first warrant, it's ready for $130,697.18. Uh, warrant number SVW 18-11.
Looking for a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Perrin, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Vecchia, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
abstain.
Mr. Martucci abstains.
And then next would be the payroll warrant?
Yep.
I don't think, um, I have the amount of the payroll warrant if you want it.
Sure.
It's, uh... No, that's a later one. I think Patty didn't put it on the front. I noticed it wasn't on there. But I can give you the amount and... It's, uh, $739,847.20. That's a payroll warrant.
All right, do we have a motion to approve that payroll warrant?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second by Mr. Perrin, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
One abstention.
There are no budget transfers, is there?
And we also received a $50 donation from Lou's Environmental Inc., which we will find inside your packet. We'd like to thank them for their donation. Do we have a motion to approve that donation?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Fabiano, second by Mr. Vecchia. Just like to thank them for that. Moving on to buildings and grounds. Oh, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Ms. Howard, anything on buildings and grounds?
Moving on to buildings and grounds. At this time, we do not have any requests for buildings and grounds. We did quite a few at the last school meeting.
Ms. Howard, anything on the curriculum, this is...
I don't believe the curriculum subcommittee knew, had they?
No. Just, um, just back on buildings and grounds only because of our policy group. And they gave it to Patty was Special Olympics.
Yeah, I think we...
But it was necessary, I think there was a nuance that was necessary January and February. I think, what did we do, December? She wasn't, um, when I wasn't quite sure whether they were settled.
Can we wait to the next meeting?
Yeah, I don't believe it, I don't believe it's in this packet, so...
You have the dates.
It's every Sunday, so...
Starting one.
Every Sunday. So we've already done September, October, November, December, where I think we do it two months at a time.
Okay.
So it would be necessary January and February.
We can do that at the next meeting?
Yep.
So it's your time.
It was, January may have already been approved at the last meeting, I'm not sure.
I think it's two months at a time.
Okay.
That's why.
Okay. We could do it at the next meeting.
Subcommittee reports. I do believe we had a budget subcommittee for our last meeting.
Budget subcommittee? We had a budget subcommittee meeting, however, I don't believe the notes were drawn for that as of...
Yeah, and I was not a member of that committee.
So we'll have to do that for the next, we'll put that on the agenda for the next meeting.
I believe Ms. Sullivan was the chair of that committee, and she's no longer a member of the school committee.
Correct, we'll check with Ms. Hames to find out if notes were drawn, but I know as of this, earlier this week, they were not.
Okay. Moving on to the superintendent's report.
So superintendent's report, as everybody knows, we had a few days of school canceled. I would like to start off by thanking a host of people, beginning with Steve Callar and the DPW crew, Chief Lanigan in the fire department, acting chief Goodman, chief of police and the police station, and all the guys that worked tirelessly to make sure our streets were cleared and we were able to get where we needed to get. Mikhail, who is our, Philippo is our facilities manager, and our custodial staff, which started work, I think, Wednesday night through Thursday, Friday, sad day. Thought we were going to have a reprieve on Sunday, and then we had a little blip in the record and had many of them back. Athletic director Matt Sorino for digging out vans, our transportation coordinator helping with that, and town manager Terry Delahanty. The amount of collaboration, discussion, communication with each other, and efforts of all involved to make sure the town was safe, and that our students were able to get to school, and that our community members were able to get to and from their homes. There's nothing short of amazing. It's really my first experience doing the pregame of a storm, so knowing the storm is coming, and meeting with town officials to sort of plan for the what ifs, and to determine whether or not we're going to have school, and to hear information from fire and police, as well as folks like Mema and all these agencies that talk about the storm that was coming. In my 40-plus years, I won't go any further than that, I had not seen a storm that bad since the blizzard of '78. At which time, my father reminded me, I did get a ride in the front of a front-end loader from Lincoln Terrace down to the point. And so when I saw around the news that there were people in the, being removed from their houses in front-end loaders, that's, that's pretty epic. However, my responsibility jumped this time from really having to be concerned about my house, on Waldmarav, and my four children, and of course, my parents, to having to be worried about three, really four, schools, three physical buildings, and 2,000 kids. And so it was a wee bit nerve-wracking. I was attached to the police scanner, which is a gift that you get when you become a superintendent. I don't know if it's a gift or a curse, but I listened to it probably 24 hours a day for about five days straight. The number of fires, rescues, health-related issues, floods, calls to the schools. It was amazing to me that people could actually handle that level of chaos. All the while, the people like Terry, Steve Callar, our facilities manager, myself, constantly talking to each other about what was going on to make sure we were prioritizing and taking care of not just the children of Winter, but Winter as a whole. So something that I experienced for the first time, and was more than, more than impressed. So I wanted to thank them personally for that, and we've done some other personal thank yous by moving around and speaking with people. So yesterday, I felt like we were headed in the right direction. I knew we had a little bit of cleanup left to do at the coming school that was planned. We were sort of waiting until the activity sort of died down a little bit. We had some town trucks available to us, as well as our own snow remover to clear out that parking lot. That was scheduled for 3:30 this morning. And about 3:30 in the afternoon, I received a call, heard it on the scanner first, that we had a fire alarm over at the new middle high school, and called over there, happened to reach Matt Crombie, who was there picking up some paperwork, and there was a fire alarm going off, which we thought was a result of water pressure. We've been having some difficulty town-wide with water pressure causing fire alarms to going off, to go off. And in most cases, there is nothing going wrong, except the pressure is causing the alarm to go off. And that's what we thought it was. About three minutes after, Matt and I hung up, he texted me and said, oh, no, it's a little bit bigger than that. And we had a pipe burst in one of the classrooms on the first floor of the middle school. It was a fire alarm-related burst, I guess, and it rang into the fire department and they came right out. And we had water pouring through the ceiling. And I can attest to this because I was there, it was coming down hotter than any rain I've ever seen. Coming down on top of all of our band equipment. Our kids have been practicing band during vacation time and getting ready for their upcoming holiday concert. So the band room and acoustic ceiling was raining all over our equipment, from dramas to student individual instruments to papers and books. And Matt Crombie was there, the fire department was there when I got there. And we did our best to remove all the furniture, starting off with the kids', students' equipment, anything that was a band-related item, from flutes to telephones, to drums, to student carrying cases and computers. And we got all of that out of the room, and then we proceeded to go to the other rooms that were affected, which were all in one hallway. So the Viking longship room was affected, there was water on the floor. Little bit over the top of my LL Bean boots, if anyone knows what that is. So those were pretty, pretty high waters in those rooms. Went to both of those classrooms, it went down a hallway into two bathrooms, two storage rooms where the students, when they're having drama productions, will change their clothes, and they have costumes in there. Put as much of that up high as we, as we could. And then it continued down the hallway into two electrical rooms. New buildings, smartly enough, put the electric things up a little bit higher than the floor. So aside from some items that were on the floor from the stage, some lights that had been stored in there, we grabbed those and put those out into the calf where it was a little bit drier, but the water was heading in that direction as well. Once they got the water turned off, we were able to go out into the auditorium, which was interesting to watch Matt and I standing there going, okay, who's going to open the door first? You know, because you don't really want to see what's going on in there, considering we were standing in water. It was pretty wet. The stage itself was covered in water, and as we, two of us walked towards the front of the stage, it was pitch black in there because the lights weren't on. The water was, you could hear the water going over the side of the stage onto the floor. So needless to say, we grabbed a couple of squeegees, big squeegees, and started pushing the water towards the door to try to minimize that. Fire department was amazing, they had huge machines that belonged to the school that sucked the water up. They turned those on and started working on those, and Matt and I continued to squeegee towards the door. And we got it pretty much under control. We called service master, our facilities manager, Rich Sufini came over, called service master. Fire department stayed for a couple of hours, helping us move materials out into a drier spot. And then we sort of just stood there and said, okay, now what? You know, we had just, I had just finished drafting an email about coming back to school to send out to our parents, and wanted to make sure we could make a good decision about that. So lo and behold, service master came out about 6:30. Jimmy Larry stayed for us overnight and worked with service master to dry up as much as they could. We were back there this morning doing some inventory. We had our Alagui, who was our building inspector out there looking at the stage. We have the insurance company coming. We had Gil Bain, which is the building project people who helped build that entire structure, come out and look into the ceiling and take a peek at what may or may not be needed in that ceiling, or may not have been there, that should have been. So we have a lot of work ahead of us in terms of dealing with the insurance company. We are inventorying everything. Beautiful thing about a new building is the records are kept pristine, so we know exactly what we had in those rooms for materials and supplies. We did notify our students and parents of any student who may have been affected for those rooms, and we called the two teachers that evening and let them know as well. So we were lucky that Matt was in the building when the alarm went off. I think that helped, saved us some time. But moving forward, we felt it was fine to open school because it was a sprinkle of pipe and not a heating pipe, so we could run the water, we had no trouble using our water. Students were relocated. The two classroom teachers were amazing in not, you know, losing it, and able to keep the kids calm and ensure them that whatever was lost is part of the flood, we will get back for them. Mr. Curly is working with the students and Chelsea DePaz to see how we can get the kids' concert. They have a concert coming up, and we want to make sure that we don't miss that if we don't have to. So I'll have more of an update when we have somebody come out to look at the materials, and meaning the band equipment, to see what does need a full replacement or a repair. And we'll be working with the insurance company to ensure that that gets done. So Sunday was a, was a busy afternoon and a busy evening. But we made it, and we got back, everybody back to school safely. And again, thank you to all those who participated during the storm and during our little pipe burst. And my superintendent's report, I think that's probably enough for this week. You know, given that we have a few days off. And we're back to business now, working on the budget. We had three principal budget meetings today. We are in full force, looking at every line item and predicting what we're going to be needing for next year in terms of class hours and whatnot.
Mr. Perrin?
Just to correct, I received a text from the former chair, Dr. Sullivan, that the last budget meeting was right into the last meeting.
It was?
Yes.
Okay, great. So then we don't have to have that on the agenda.
Correct.
Moving forward.
Ms. Howard, anything on the personnel?
On the personnel, yes. So on appointments and resignations, we have none. We do have a few postings. One which is junior varsity track coach. And we also have a part-time office aide replacing the office aide that left the central office to take a position over at the high school. So we'd like to post both of those. And retirements, we have none, and leave of absence, none at this time.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just to go back a little bit, could I ask Ms. Howard something?
Absolutely. Just always wondering if you had an update on the playground, because I thought that was...
Sure. Yep, I can give you that. So we are waiting, we had, the person who did the original evaluation of the playground and wrote up the report, came back out to relook at the park itself, to see some of the developments that, little things that we had done to help correct it, and we actually had her come in to ask her opinion on some of the structures that we have there, whether they need to be replaced, or was it something that we needed a full replacement, or certain things, I was wondering if they were still under warranty. So she came out and she did that, a whole evaluation. She walked around with Ryan Harity and the facilities manager as well, and gave us some verbal sort of opinion on what needed to be done. She has then, since then, sent us an email about some suggestions that she has around replacement or complete replacement of the ground, meaning the turf or the surface of the park, or repairing that. We're waiting for some estimates. She has coordinated that for us to get us some estimates on both, and then we'll reconvene the team to see what makes the most sense. Terry Delahanty is part of that team, along with Sean Driscoll, Ryan Harity, and myself. And to make a good decision moving forward as to what we should do, and then how we're going to support the cost around that. So not knowing what the cost is, we do know that since we started the process of looking into it and involving the original person who came out and did the evaluation, we have found that two of the slides were under warranty. So that's a significant savings to us. And that we have some cost for replacement of swings, but we don't want to go ahead and go out and buy those swings yet. If we're going to replace the whole swing structure. So I would say by the end of the month, we should have a good plan moving forward. We have also put into place, since the report came back and we have read it, a weekly building check, sorry, playground check by the building custodian. And we're using the documents that came as part of the original evaluation. It's a nice checklist that allows you to kind of go through and make sure certain things are tightened, and if you replace something, to make note of it. And that goes into the custodian's weekly report, and is checked by the principal.
Anything besides the surface, like a high priority in her opinion?
The surface was the highest priority, and she talked a lot about, and it sounds a little odd, but the bounceability factor. So when a, when a student is to fall on that surface, the idea is that they would bounce. And so right now, you don't bounce because of the structure itself. It's old, it's worn in certain points. So the cost to fully replace that or to repair it, there's different ways you can do it with different structures. Some is fill, some is like the wood chips. So having those prices for us to determine which is the best way to go.
Right, and I don't think we'd want to do it until the summertime anyways, because you don't want to take that playground away from the kids.
Correct. And it's a multi, it's a multi-use playground, so it is used during the school day by the students, but the amount of traffic, reported by Sean in that, Driscoll in that backyard, you know, that facility, that whole backyard, is quite a bit. Families use that on the weekends and in the evenings after school hours to take their children to. So when it's done, we'd like to do it with an emphasis on maximum use, that the community will be able to continue to use it. So repairing certain pieces may not be beneficial. Replacing may be a better way to go. So as soon as we get the rest of the pricing, Chief Delahanty will sit down with us and, as well as Sean Driscoll, and sort of look at it from a whole community perspective. We're also looking into, whatever grant funding might be available, and the evaluator is also helping us do that. She has some more insight into park grants that maybe is available that we might not know of. So that will be helpful.
Thank you.
Sure.
Heading out to new business, as we all know, our colleague on the school committee, Ron Vecchia, was successful, is now the president of our town council. So there is a vacancy on the school committee, and President Vecchia, we're very proud of you. Congratulations. So over the coming weeks, we're going to have an open process, a complete application process for candidates to apply. We'll have another joint meeting between the council and the school committee, where we will appoint another member of this committee. Mr. Vecchia, would you like to update us on that process, anything with the council?
The clerk is re-contacting the individuals that applied the last time to see if they're still interested, and we're putting out, you know, public notice that it is open. Anybody can apply. Simple as that.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Martucci?
Do we have a date on the meeting yet?
I believe right now...
Tendably was scheduled for the 16th. We did get another application in today that's been circulated, and I don't know if there's going to be more. The 16th is going to be good, that's only next week.
Yeah, in my opinion, I think the 16th is much too fast. I think we need to have, there needs to be a week or so for an application process, and then I think we need another week or so to speak to all the candidates. President Vecchia, would the council be open to extending this deadline?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Fabiano?
Are we setting any dates to say, okay, your application can be at this time, so then we can talk to every one of the applicants? Or are we just going to leave it open to the timeframe of the next meeting, that meeting?
This is where it gets a little fuzzy, according to the chatter. As Council Del, former Council Delvento pointed out, technically, a nomination could be made from the floor that day. I don't know, but I think it's the best practice. What we did last time is we did make a deadline. But is this something that we can do as a council?
We can move the meeting to a further week out, and we can put a deadline for applications to be submitted. I think that'll give everybody an opportunity to be very clear that they need to get their application and their resume in a week prior to the meeting. Don't give everybody enough time if they want to interview them, et cetera. I mean, last time I went through the process, I actually interviewed everybody.
Yeah.
Now we have an additional application coming, and who knows, there'll probably be more.
Because what concerns me is during the last time of this process, we set a date, and then some of the council felt that we weren't prepared, and we had folks come to a meeting for no reason. And this time, I'd just rather have everyone be prepared and not go through that again.
Well, you brought a good point out. Anybody can be nominated at any time.
Yeah.
If someone decided to show up at the meeting and say they would like to apply for this, and someone could nominate them, there's no set process.
There's no set process.
I think what we've tried to do is make the process as open as possible, so that everybody, you know, knows exactly where we're coming from.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not aware if we already got our town emails? So how would they be able to get in touch with us?
I believe that's something that the town is working on over the next few days. In the meantime, I will forward you any applications that I receive. The only application that I received so far personally was from one candidate that's in the audience today, Suzanne Swope, and I could forward that to you after the meeting.
Okay. And that has her email and her contact information on it?
That's all in, that's all in there.
Okay.
I think as far as your emails, you should contact Patty, Patty's out today, right? I would contact the office and they can send it up for you.
Yeah, it's in, she's in, is in process.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, she told us that. Will we, and can we get the names of the people as they say?
Everything will be forwarded to, and since her name was brought up, I will call on Ms. Swope.
I, I, I did talk to Denise today, and I said I just had a couple of minor tweaks I'd like to make.
Okay.
And that I would send everything to her again tomorrow, if that's...
Yep, absolutely. So, is there a date in mind, President Vecchia, we would like this, a particular council meeting?
It would, I would like to do it during the normal, so we'd have to call a special meeting where we're meeting, and we could have a joint session a half hour prior. So that would be the, probably the last meeting of the month, which I believe would be the last Tuesday of the month.
Okay.
Do we want to move our regularly scheduled meeting to do it the same day, so that we're not doubling up on meetings?
I don't think we can, because that's when the council meeting goes.
I mean, we could do that overlap meeting, and, oh, we had talked about you, you'd be...
Yeah.
We would hold it at 6:30, the combined meeting, and then 7 o'clock outbreak meeting.
Like we did last time. And do you know the date on that?
23rd?
23rd.
Be the 30th.
30th. So I would like...
We meet the 16th, and so our next town council meeting...
30th, you are correct. Two weeks ago, yeah.
So I think it might be a good idea if we were to take a non-binding vote, saying that you could put to the council, the school committee may be recommended that this meeting takes place on the 30th. And maybe a deadline could be set the week prior to that.
That's good. Someone like to second my motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Martucci. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, just to point to clarity, in terms of people who have applied prior, do they need to reapply?
I believe they will still have to reapply, because it's a new process. But I will speak to Ms. Hames and ask her to just remind those people that this is a new process. If they're interested, all I have to do is click send.
Denise was in the process of reaching my contact.
And it is important that these candidates realize that there are new, new, new members of the school committee, new members of the council. So it's different folks they have to reach out to.
Great, thank you.
Can we make a motion, do we take a five-minute recess?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Policy, be smoking on school premises policy. Since we do not have a member of the policy committee here tonight, we're going to make a motion that we waive this to the next school committee meeting.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fabiano, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. Any public comment? No public comment, moving on to public relations, that will Mr. Martucci.
All set, thanks.
Mr. Fabiano?
I'd just like to go over a few of the home athletics that we have this week. Girls' basketball is home on Tuesday at 7 o'clock, the varsity. Boys' hockey, varsity's home on Wednesday at 6:10. Girls' varsity, Thursday, 6:10, home as well. What else we got? Boys' varsity basketball, Friday night at 7 o'clock. And one more.
Any swimming there?
No swimming. And I think that's about it. So it'd be nice if we see, a lot of people down there supporting our athletics. The students appreciate it. They like to see big crowds. Put the pressure on them.
You say swim meet?
Swimming, yeah. Swim meet.
Could have done that in the band room.
We could do it in the band room, just in case they didn't... There's always been a pool, it's usually on the third floor.
You didn't have water yesterday?
No, I know. I had enough water yesterday. Let's skip that meet.
Mr. Perrin, any public relations?
Nothing for me.
I just wanted to welcome Ms. Powell, Mr. Fabiano, and Mr. Martucci. Technically, their second meeting as our committee. And congratulations, and we're glad to have you.
Thank you.
Ms. Powell?
Nothing at this time.
President Vecchia?
The middle school band is having a concert this coming Wednesday night at 6:30.
Yes.
Originally scheduled to be in the auditorium, so...
May still be.
May still be.
May still be, if the allegie, our inspector says that it's safe to stand on it, which I'd rather he make that call than I. Then we will have it in there. If not, we will notify parents.
Okay.
And plenty of time to make sure that folks know where they're going, where their students are going. I trust Mr. Paz that she will have that information out.
No doubt.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Martucci.
Second.
Second by Mr. Fabiano, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it.